Good evening, thanks for coming to our budget study session. And just roll call for the record, please.
House Member Ray.
Here.
House Member Lawrence.
Here.
House Member Potter.
Here.
House Member Penrose.
Here.
All gangs all here, thank you. And let us begin, who will be starting off for our budget session tonight? That will be our city manager, excellent.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. My name is Magda Gonzalez, it's my pleasure to be your city manager of this fine city. And it's my pleasure to be with you this evening to present the proposed budget for 2015-16. Before I get started, I'd like to thank, I'd like to start by thanking the staff, who has worked very, very hard to get this budget together. It takes a great deal of hours, while it takes a long time to read it, it takes many, many more hours to prepare it, so I just really want to thank everybody for their work. I also want to thank the council for your leadership in allowing us, you're allowing us as staff to provide you this budget. Because in years past, I'm sure the budget looked very different. So I, I think the message for today's budget is that of possibilities and opportunities in terms of where we are as an organization, where we are as a city. The city is financially healthy and coming out of a very difficult time. Many services were severely reduced and eliminated. The city was very resilient and created a new model of doing business which allowed it to survive. As the city is improving financially, the expectations too have grown tremendously, even in the short time that I've been here. The organization has not grown relative, as well as in terms of the finances or the expectations. We still have a few vacancies to fill. We have had some transition in the finance department that we are dealing with, and we are becoming more stable with the new finance director and in terms of the organization in general. This budget today that we're presenting is our opportunity to provide to the council what we think, based on the strategic planning and the other budget study sessions that we've had, is the direction that you've given us in terms of how you'd like to see your resources spent, in terms of service level delivery and in terms of capital projects. And there are many opportunities on the horizon. This morning, we'll provide you some background information and provide you some context, provide some highlights in terms of what's included in the budget document itself, but most importantly, we'd like to hear from you, get direction from you and answer any additional questions that you may have. We received several questions in advance and I really do appreciate that, and expect that there may be more questions this evening. By way of background, again, just to give a little bit of kudos and to perhaps private, provide a little context and understanding, as you know, in the budget, we have an item under CIP for financial software. We don't have a financial software system, which means all of our information is in, on Excel spreadsheets. And that can work, but it's just a little bit more labor intensive. But given that, I think that we, you will see that we, since that, since the time we've produced this proposed budget, we have found a couple of minor errors, nothing that's going to change the budget substantially, and we will make those changes with the finalized Along those lines, just, and we'll talk about it in more detail, you'll see that the question did come up in terms of the Glencrey property and moving that into the land asset fund, and then also in terms of the funding, the original funding that was allocated for the library, so we'll talk a little bit about where that is. We've left some of that in the proposed budget in terms of where it's been, waiting to get more direction from you or make sure that we get the blessing, if you will, from the council this evening before we moved it, so we wanted to make sure there was a paper trail in terms of that, that movement. The big picture in terms of this budget is very positive, fiscally and organizationally. You'll see several, many, very wonderful projects that are planned for the next year and for the future. The city's done a wonderful job of changing the course and taking control of its future, again, thanks to the actions of the council and the staff. It's been an incredible turnaround. As someone who was not here when that happened, to see it happen from the outside is pretty amazing. In the next year, I expect to see the organization become more stable and strong, that's what I call organizational infrastructure. We're filling positions with very talented individuals, and we're trying to retain those positions and retain that talent as well. As you know, this organization has suffered from turnover in the past, we're trying to change that. We continue to be a very small organization, and our staff has to wear many, many hats, but they've been working very hard to make that happen. We're trying to do a better job of always reviewing the organization, assessing the organization, and determining how we might be able to be more efficient in the work that, that we do, and how we can provide services more efficiently. We're also trying to improve and tell the good story of this city and the organization, and trying to improve the communication channels that we have. There are many projects in the next year's CIP that I think, while there are many and we do have a small staff, we believe that it's a realistic list of projects, presuming, of course, that there are not too many unexpected and unplanned projects that come our way, which we know will happen. Seymour Bridge is one example, that Pelusitos Creek Bridge is another example, that's taken a great deal of staff time, but we're hoping that we can get through the list of projects in spite of the fact that we have a very, very small staff, but we're thinking we can do that. We will use, also you'll see in the budget, we plan to use technology to try to help the use of staff, again, limited staff, in terms of using technology to help us do our job easier and not work harder. That will take some staff time in terms of getting that up and running, whether it's the financial software or the website, but we want to improve that communication channel and also be able to relieve some of staff resources so that the, the community can access some of that information on their own. So tonight, I'd like to just review the agenda here. We're going to start with a little bit of an overview in terms of the budget process and how we've gotten to this point. We'd like to celebrate our accomplishments, we often are looking forward. I was meeting earlier with someone in, actually with council member Penrose, who said, "Oh, Sunday was such a wonderful event," and I said, "Oh yeah, I forgot," because I'm so focused on the budget right now, so we have to stop and celebrate our accomplishments. We'll talk a little bit about the financial assumptions that were used in developing this budget. We'll look a little bit forward in terms of the update and the outlook moving forward in terms financially. We'll give you a highlight in terms of the operational budget, some of the highlights that are in the budget, the proposed budget, operational and in terms of personnel. And then we'll go to the CIP plan itself. Again, we'll celebrate first with the accomplishments and look at the projects that have been completed, and then look at the projects that are proposed for the next fiscal year 15-16, and then finally, answer any additional questions you might have and listen to any direction that you'd like to provide staff. So at this time, I'd like to turn it over to our city clerk, Siobhan Smith.
Thank you, Magda. So I'm just going to do a quick recap of kind of where we've been and where we are now in the budget process. Tonight's meeting is the fifth in a series of six meetings relating to the 2015-16 budget. And if you, we, sorry, multitasking. So starting on December 16th, the city council approved a budget for, a budget calendar for, to go through the process. And on January 13th, the city council had a strategic plan and communications retreat where they started to outline for us some of the concerns for the upcoming budget and their priorities and things they wanted to see. Based upon some of that input that we received from council, we updated the budget council, the budget calendar on March 3rd. On March 17th, we had another budget study session, and at that study session, we talked about the financial outlook and assumptions, some of the CIP things that council wanted to see in this budget, and some of the information that we have on cost allocation, user fees, impact fees. This evening, we have the draft budget for council to provide additional input. You know, we hope that we've captured most of what you wanted to see, but this is a draft document and this is a chance for you to give us additional input. And then on June 2nd, the final budget will come to the city council for adoption. Thanks.
Okay, then I'll now ask our finance director, Yulia Carter, to walk us through some of the financial assumptions and financial outlook.
Let's look at financial assumptions. Let's look at financial assumptions that we use to develop the budget. General fund revenues are projected to remain flat at 14.1 million. Transit occupancy tax, also called hotel tax, is the city's largest revenue source and is projected to go up by approximately 2.5 percent. Sales tax revenues, it's the biggest largest category, is showing nice increase of 7.5 percent. And the property tax is showing about 2 percent increase based on the information we received from the county. These positive trends are somewhat offset by some reductions in charges for services that are down by about 16 percent. And the reason for this is a one-time grant for general plan update that was recorded in the current year's budget, and we didn't account for this for the upcoming budget. Also, other revenues are projected to go down by about 15 percent, and the reason for this is about 200,000 reduction in pension credit that we are going to receive from the sheriffs. Another forecasted change in revenues is the end of Measure J in March of 2016, which means that this upcoming year is going to be the last year when the city will collect these revenues. The proposed budget includes about 1.7 million in Measure J capital allocations, that we will discuss a little bit, well, in details a little bit later tonight, and the estimated year-end balance of Measure J at the end of fiscal year 16 is projected to be about 1.1 million. Another important change in revenue assumptions is potential loss of excess revenue, excess ERAF revenues. ERAF stands for Educational Revenue Augmentation Fund, and come from the, from overfunding transfers of city property tax that is sent to the state. In previous years, the city has received ERAF rebates from the county that have ranged between 100,000 and 200,000 a year. These revenues were recorded in general fund. These funds are likely to be taken away from the cities in the nearest future, and which is why staff and the county's control office is recommending that these revenues are treated as one-time funds and recorded directly in CIP program, starting in the, with the upcoming year 2016. And finally, there is no revenue increase built in for the user fee adjustments. The city contracted with NBS Services just a few months ago to develop the cost allocation plan and perform the user fee study. The project is now underway, but we did not have enough information to develop these assumptions in time for the budget. Staff will be working with a consultant over the next several months and to develop the user fee model for council's consideration, and will make any necessary adjustments as part of mid-year budget update. Next slide shows breakdown of the general fund revenues. Again, the largest category is transit occupancy tax. It generates about 5.2 million in the upcoming budget, that's a projection, and represents about 37 percent of the general fund revenues. Followed by sales tax with 3.8 million or 27 percent share of general fund revenues, and property tax of 2.7 or 19 percent of general revenues. Next slide. So now let's talk a little bit about property tax revenues. Again, this is one of the top general fund revenue categories that brings about 2.7 million to the city's general fund. Everybody knows that every property owner pays the same 1 percent of the property value, but not everyone knows that every city gets a very different share of these revenues. This table provides a property tax comparison with other cities in San Mateo County. As you can see in the chart in front of you, the city of Huffman Bay property tax rate share is far less than the average in the county. And actually, in fact, we are nearly at the bottom of the chart, followed just by City South Side and Portola Valley. Huffman Bay only gets less than 7 cents on a dollar, while the county's average is about 17 cents on the tax dollar. And just to put this information in perspective, you can see what it means to the city's general fund. On each property tax dollar, and the property tax dollar is right in front of you on this slide. So on each property tax dollar that Huffman Bay homeowners pay, less than 7 percent, 7 cents goes to the city's general fund, which is just this little, small rate stripe right there in front of you. And you can see that School District, San Mateo County, and Far District get the biggest share of these revenues. Just very briefly, I'd like to say a few words about the expenditure assumptions, as Alex will go over the major changes to the budget in just a few minutes. The city's contractual obligations are projected to grow by 3 percent on average, just to cover inflation. Overall expenses decrease compared to the current year's amended budget due to early retirement of 2009 A Series Judgment Obligation Bonds. And again, for someone who just joined this organization, I'd like to say that this is really impressive accomplishment, and it's a tribute to the city's healthy fiscal condition. And the decision to retire these funds will have a huge, huge positive financial impact on general fund for the upcoming year and for the future years as well. The budget does not include any potential increases for employee compensation. And on the next slide, you can see breakdown of general fund expenditures by department. Overall budget expenditures remain flat at about 10 million in fiscal year 16. The three largest service areas are public safety, and this is primarily sheriff's contract, public works maintenance, and community development department. That includes engineering, building, and code enforcement, as well as planning services. There were a few other assumptions used for the budget. And these assumptions include establishing three new funds in the proposed budget. Land Asset Fund 79 was created per council's direction back in February to move Beechwood property to a separate fund. Staff intends to move Glencrey property value to the same fund, but have not done that yet, as we want to get the council's direction tonight for the section. Library Capital Fund 16 was created also per council's direction from the previous study session on March 17th. The library budget includes the original half a million county's contribution that was recorded in the original library capital account in Fund 48, which is called Public Facilities. And we recorded these funds in fiscal year 15, so it is in the current fiscal year budget. We intend to move these funds to newly created Fund 16, but again, we would like to have council's direction to do that tonight. The general fund transfer to Fund 16, the transfer of 3 million from general fund was recorded in, also in projected fiscal year 15 budget, per council's previous direction. And finally, we are allocating half a million in Measure J revenues for the library in fiscal year 16 budget. And I would like to point out that the library project page is currently showing 750,000 of Measure J revenues, and it is a mistake, we are going to correct it for the upcoming, for the final book. And finally, the proposed budget establishes unrestricted general capital fund, we call it Fund 25. It is funded, it is intent, the intent of this fund, that the fund will be funded by the transfer from general fund to account for all general CIP projects. At this point, we only establish the fund, any appropriations to this fund will be subject for future council actions. So next slide. Now, we are pleased to deliver the good news. We already talked about the general fund revenues and expenditures, but on this slide, you can see that city brings in significantly more in general fund revenues than it spends on, on operations, leaving over 4.1 million in structural surplus. Net operating transfers add another 1.1 million to pay for things like debt service payment, risk management, insurance premiums, et cetera. General fund also transfers over 2.5 million in capital program. Again, we will discuss this in details a little bit later this evening. Yet even factoring in all these transfers and all the operating expenditures, there is still a very healthy, almost 450,000 net change to general fund balance. What this means is that the city is able to fully fund its operations and capital program out of this surplus, and if the council approves all recommendations included in the proposed budget, the city's general fund balance is projected to receive additional 450,000 at the end of fiscal year 16. Now let's look at the general fund, fund balance itself. The beginning general fund balance is projected at 8.2 million as of July 1. After funding all services and proposed capital projects, we expect to add another 450,000 to the general fund balance, to total projected fund balance of almost 8.7 million. The council previously adopted the policy to commit 30 percent of operating expenditures as a contingency reserve, in addition to other commitment to Measure J and Main Street Bridge funding. Yet after taking into account all these committed reserves, the city still projects a very healthy 3.1 million in this unassigned general fund balance at the end of fiscal year 16. Now let's take a look at the five-year financial outlook. Assuming that the current trend continues and the city will stay consistent with its expenditures, the revenues are expected to consistently exceed the expenditures, even after Measure J goes away in fiscal year 16-17. And you can see this change is reflected in, in a drop in revenues, in the blue bar in fiscal year 16-17. The surplus, and by surplus, I mean the difference between the blue and red bars. This surplus will be available for the city to use on capital program and still leaves the city with the healthy fund balance shown in the next slide. Again, the city, the city council previously set aside 30 percent of general fund balance for contingency, this is shown in green on this chart. In addition to, city council set aside Measure J and the Main Street Bridge commitments, shown in blue, and again, you can see a drop in these commitments as we continue to deploy Measure J reserves. Yet the unassigned reserve balance, which is shown in purple, is expected to remain strong over the next five years, given the council's financial resources to implement its strategic vision for the community. And on this positive note, I would like to turn to Alex, who will go over the major changes to the budget.
Good evening, Ms. Mayor, members of the council, Alex Kojikian, deputy city manager for this great city. I'm happy to highlight a couple areas of operations of the city. So first and foremost, I'd like to highlight that the operating budget for city services to keep everything going for the community is 9.97 million dollars in this upcoming year's budget. The general fund budget is balanced, and there's a structural surplus of 4.1 million in the 15-16 budget. What, a couple of the highlights is, is that we'll be implementing translation services for the community newsletter and for specific community meetings. We'll also be completing work on city cost allocations and impact fee and master fee schedules, just as Yulia was mentioning earlier. We'll also be working on designing, developing a new city website. We'll be utilizing sheriff's office, the sheriff's office bicycle unit to go ahead and patrol downtown areas and coastal trails. We'll be adding new financial software, as the city manager was speaking earlier, and we'll be completing an annual maintenance of recently improved streets. There'll be a purchase of two new public works utility vehicles, and we'll be planning multiple community special events and concerts. So some highlights of operating changes to mention, $150,000 for annual road maintenance. What this is, is to start investing back into your guy, the city council's initial investment over five years ago, when you guys went ahead and budgeted hundreds of thousands and millions of dollars in doing upgraded street resurfacing. So the public works maintenance division will be overseeing going back to those roads and start working on maintenance so that we get as much lifespan out of those roads. Vehicle and equipment replacements, that was what I was talking about earlier, two new utility vehicles, because we've reached the end of life on a couple of them, and we're getting new employee as well in the public works department, and we'll be getting a new mower, because ours is almost 30 years old, you can go and check it out sometime at the yard, and that'll go ahead and help mow our city parks. Downtown Mill Street parking lot lease, this is the parking lot just adjacent to, it's a tally over there at Mill Street and Main, and this has 33 spaces, the city's been using it since 1998. With it, the lease has come up, and so we were negotiating that lease, but the landlord that we're negotiating with wanted a significant increase. We were currently paying 11,000 and we negotiated down to 21,600 from a very high amount of 30,000 earlier, so that's in there, but we understand the strategic location of the parking lot and how much it's actually used for the downtown business corridor as well. There's 210,000 decreased sheriff's office pension credit last year, or in the past, the city's received 510,000, so now we're down to 210,000. On the Chamber of Commerce Visitors Bureau, there is a reduction year over year, so we were using Measure J dollars this current year, we had budgeted $100,000. That included 25,000 for the Hotel Business Improvement District, another 25,000 for the Visitors Bureau, and then another $50,000, and that was part of the Measure J economic development and tourism promotion. This year, what we have budgeted is 25,000 for the Hotel Business Improvement District, 25,000 for the Visitors Bureau, and additional 10,000 for the midweek business stays. We have, the chamber has hired an individual who's done a great job of attracting midweek meetings and conventions out here, and getting more hotel stays and boosting the local economy. We'll also be looking at adding additional benches on the coastal trails, so there are current benches out there, but we would be adding benches right, adjacent to it, so we'd have to go through the permitting process and buy some of those benches. There is a significant SAM budget increase, we're looking at 10.8 percent year over year for treatment plant operations, 17.8 percent increase for collections costs of our 35-mile system maintaining it within our city. And then there's a CIP of $271,000, and that is for the inner tie pipeline system, it's replacing over 1,000 linear feet, and then also adding a new motor at a pump station up in Montero as well. There's increased council meeting and training budget, this is to reflect the actual usage, it's gone from 5,000, that's currently up to 15,000, that's what we have proposed. And then labor negotiations, those results are not included in this budget at this time. That concludes my presentation, I'll pass it back to Russell, the personnel.
Good evening, councilman. Russell Brunson, administrative services manager. Our 2015-2016 budget also includes some personal changes which are highlighted on this slide above, which include the conversion of a couple of positions from contract to permanent employees of the city, and we believe those, those couple of changes are very, very crucial to us operating at a high level for the city. The suggested changes that we've outlined here will only result in the addition of about one and a half positions when compared to 14-15, because in this current year, we've already condensed three positions into, into two, so we had some savings there, and so ultimately will result in just the addition of one and a half positions, which I'll go through in a little bit. Why are we making the change at this time? When, at the time we made the, the decision to hire contractors and have them provide services, the city was in a different position. We were in a different position financially, we had fewer projects to complete, we needed to expand and contract work teams on the fly, and we also didn't have time for employees to ramp up on projects, we needed someone to come in, plug in, play, and go. And we're just in a different position now, we have more projects to complete, and those projects are sometimes very, very complex. We have more projects to complete, and those projects are sometimes very, very complex, as Dante will review in the CIP portion of this. We've also, we understand that the council has prioritized the city enhancing its operations and services, and having these employees in a couple of these crucial positions will allow us to build relationships with stakeholders over time, so we can actually better serve them over time. And again, as we've mentioned, we're in a better financial position now as a result of prior actions by council and staff. And, you know, we just determined that we need assistance in the new year from some additional staff. So a couple of the changes that we are suggesting, first is the city engineer and permit tech, which we brought to you in the last budget presentation. We're interested in having the city engineer come onboard as a permanent employee rather than a contractor because of the number and complexity of the projects that are coming up in the new year. And with the permit counter technician, as I mentioned, that position would better serve the public by building relationships with them over time, and the people come to the counter. We're also interested in adding a senior management analyst classification with one and a half positions in that. And that classification, we needed to handle some of the higher-level projects, so one position will be placed in the city manager's office, working on some of the initiatives that Alex just presented to you, some of the high-level initiatives. The other analyst, senior analyst, will be assisting with the general plan update. We've heard that we really need to get working on that, get more community involvement, and we're proposing to have a halftime position as a senior management analyst to handle that. And then we also have a senior accountant that we're recommending. Currently, we've had a management analyst position in the finance department, but we're going to reclass that. We're interested in reclassing that into a senior accountant, because we found that we don't have accounting expertise in the operation, that we actually need that, so it fills that gap. And so those are the internal changes. We also have a partnership with the county for the San Mateo, sorry, with the County Office of Emergency Services with the district coordinator, and I'm going to turn it over to Lieutenant Muncy to talk about some changes there.
Madam Mayor, council, good evening. In addition to the changes Russell just described, the city will also be increasing its contribution to the County Office of Emergency Services for the continued service of the district coordinator. The city will increase its funding of the position from 33% to 50% of the position. The increase was caused after the planned ending of funding for the position from the Silicon Valley Community Foundation for fiscal year 1516. The district coordinator continually works with city staff, businesses, residents, unincorporated communities, and governmental agencies to build relationships between these groups for an effort for preparation for response to disasters. The city is interested in increasing the contribution of the immense need for regional emergency services and the many accomplishments of the coordinator, including, but not limited to, the many disaster preparedness exercises and drills the coordinator has organized, including the last two tsunami drills, his assistance in developing and maintaining the coast side emergency plan, his development of the coast side emergency corps, a collection of volunteers ready to assist the community in the event of a disaster. Thank you. I'll now turn it over to Dante Hall. There's no questions.
Dante Hall, I'm the Community Development Director for this great city. What I'm going to go through is a capital improvement program, and part of the information we presented to you at the last time when we talked about the budget. Simply, the capital improvement program is just a medium-to-long-term financing plan for how the city plans on paying for infrastructure improvements that it needs, like sewers, roads, and some of the larger kind of one-time expenditures. It's, it generally is broken up into two different parts. The one year, and we'll see an example shortly here, is really the budget. That's what is going to be happening, or that's the plan for this next fiscal year. And then the subsequent five years are what is called the capital program, and it really, again, tells you how we intend to finance all of these projects in the future. Just briefly, why do we need a CIP? It's important because it helps us to really coordinate between our capital needs and our operating budget. And when we go into a planning session, we try to strategically think about what's going on at the same time, how can we coordinate efforts and be the most efficient, and at the same time promoting this financial stability. Also, CIPs keep the public informed about what's planned for the future and also the progress of different projects. So these, again, are the categories that we traditionally have spent our capital money for, roads, sewers, and large-ticket items, or items that will have to do with kind of the overall efficiency or quality of the city, such as website improvement, such as GIS capability. So those are briefly. We received a question about how do things actually get on the CIP? And they get on a couple of different ways. The most common way is that the executive team and the city manager develop a list that's based on the council's strategic plan, which you've told us your priorities are for the community. It's based on things we see in the community that could have impacts to safety and health, such as Seymour Bridge. We let you know that there was a danger, and we were planning accordingly for that. Things also get on the list just because, you know, it may be of significant community interest. So that's, that's the common way. The other, obviously, it gets on the list if it is a direction from the city council. That also will get a project on the list. So, and I'm going through a little bit of background, because the document, it has a lot of detail, it's a lot of planning, but I just want to let you know kind of what is, what is included in some of the number projections and different things that we do. Estimating cost, we actually provide an in-house estimate for each and every project that is funded through the CIP. And estimating cost is both a science and an art. Based on our experience with current projects or past projects, we do an estimate of the labor and materials that it would take essentially to complete a project. And we include an inflation factor, and also we, on top of that, we include a contingency. Now, with the projects that are to be complete within one to two years, we put a finer point on it, because we believe that those numbers have to be refined. And so we will go kind of the extra mile to try to get a pretty accurate in-house estimate. Projects that are to be done three to five years, we are really giving the council a sense of the order of magnitude of the cost of a certain project. But as that project moves closer to being implemented, we will put a finer point on those cost estimates. 2% to 10%, depending on the services, we'll put in for inflation, and then, I'm sorry, for contingency. And we, there's other considerations like materials, depending on what's going on with the economy. You know, the price of steel today is not the price of steel three years or five years from now. So all of that has to come into consideration. These are the funding sources that we pay for our capital items. So some are general fund, some are grants. We have a lot of restricted funds that can only be used for capital projects, but it gives you kind of a sense of how we pay for what we do. So in your packet, each of the, of the projects in the CIP have this sheet. And like I was explaining, that first column in that first area there is the first year, and the cost are things that we plan on paying for in that first year. The subsequent years are the next five years of how we plan on paying for that item all the way to 2019, 2020. The section below gives you a look per year of the types of funding that's being used to pay for it. So for instance, if we were doing streets, you know, you might have gas tax money, you might have Measure A money, you might have Measure J money. But it details for you where the funds are coming from. One of the things that we did with this CIP program, when I came to the city, there were a lot of projects on the CIP. And quite frankly, I don't think we had the staff resources to actually deal with all of the projects. We had the money, but maybe not the staff resources. So this chart, or this slide, really represents the types of things and analysis that have to go on kind of behind, you know, when we get together from a staff level. So it's not just paying for the consultant or the contract. There's a lot of stuff that goes on before. We got to do the cost estimate. We got to do, if you're doing a street, we have to do survey data. We have to coordinate with utility. We have to do design, permitting, okay? We do that, then during construction, we have to monitor, we have to manage that construction, we have to ensure quality control, we have to close out, we have to pay people. So the items that we're recommending in this year's, this next year's CIP are projects that we think are more realistic. They're fewer projects. We've allocated some restricted funds that can only be used for certain projects to these, but we believe that in keeping with all of the stuff that we need to do before, during, and after, these are a list of projects that we believe we can, we can do with this, through this next fiscal year. This chart just kind of explains or kind of tells you about the different categories of capital improvement projects, and they fluctuate. They fluctuate through the years based on council priorities. One of the council priorities for the last couple of years have been streets, improving our streets. We started first with the streets that were not that bad, then we moved into the streets that were kind of medium bad. Now we're into the phase where the streets are terrible, and most of them will require a full reconstruction. That's the most expensive. And so after this, though, you'll see that your cost for capital improvements for streets is actually going to go down, because you won't have to put that investment, and then it's just a matter of maintenance, putting maintenance into your operating budget. So you, I just showed that just as a visual. And the reason why 1516 is, looks, looks high, it's not more projects, it's more money in certain areas, like the most, the worst streets, we're putting more investment, but it also includes some grant funding for certain projects that we've included in the CIP. So over the last year, these are the projects that we've completed. They may have been started in other fiscal years, or they will be complete by the end of this fiscal year. So we were able to do quite, quite a few things. I mentioned the street rehab. We're currently working with Washington Street and Ventura Street and doing the full reconstruction on those two streets. We've had several community meetings. You know, they understand the process, and they're very appreciative that city council put that investment into, into their neighborhoods. So there are kind of three categories of projects. The first category, dots in blue, will be the projects that we are recommending be funded for this next fiscal year. The next category that you'll see is not funded in this first year, but we're recommending that it be funded year two through five. And then the third category is our projects that are unfunded currently, but are on the list. You know, maybe there are grant opportunities, maybe there are other ways to get these projects funded, but they are important to the community. So, street resurfacing investment, this should be kind of the last huge kind of chunk of street rehab or resurfacing investment. Like I said, next fiscal year, we anticipate the cost will actually reduce for some of And so this gives you kind of an insight to what we're recommending in the first year for street improvements. For drainage improvements, we are recommending Keough. Council mentioned that that was something they had, they put a high priority on. We need to do some environmental studies and review to determine what the project is. One of the most important things in this list, though, is a master drainage study, a master drainage plan. It's going to be incredibly helpful for the city to understand its stormwater drainage through the city. You know, we have a lot of natural drainage channels, but we also have pipes and culverts. And it's not, it really needs attention, but it needs to be addressed in a coordinated way. So what this study will do is identify the deficiencies, but also allow us and council to look at all of the problems and issues and be able to allocate funding based on the seriousness of the problem. So we look forward to getting that drainage master plan complete this year. Parks, these are the projects we're recommending. Seymour Bridge and Pilar Cidos Bridge, obviously, are two of the projects that we're recommending for funding this year. Facilities, we talked a little bit about the library, and I believe the City Hall annex is a holding, is a, right. And so it's a placeholder, but these are essentially the facilities and public building projects that we're recommending be funded. And lastly, is kind of this miscellaneous request, and these really have to do with kind of the efficiency for the city, or maybe policy-driven. But GIS map update, we're recommending that for City Hall and for sewer system. It's going to be really helpful to understand that spatial data and be able to use that analysis as we're evaluating projects. The website upgrade, you know, we've heard a lot of concern about, you know, how our website can be improved, and that's a project in this year. And also, another holding or placeholder is an evaluation for the city property at Beechwood and Glencrey. We're recommending that we put aside some funding to do that. Really quickly, the next section are projects that we recommend funding in years two through five, but we don't recommend funding in this first year. And the details, obviously, are included in your CIP. Drainage improvements, popular beach drainage and access, there are a couple of specific spots with storm drain inspection and analysis that we're recommending that we do. Parks and trail improvements, we're recommending within that five-year period that we spend or allocate some funds to deal with those. Public facility Public facilities and buildings, the HVAC system upgrades is kind of the only thing that we're not addressing that's kind of on the list for future projects. And the next list, these are projects that do not currently have a funding source, and they're important to be on this list because it identifies a need, and it's a planning tool. And we often look to this list to go out and find funds, find grants, to accomplish, because the community, the council, has expressed that these are important to them. We don't have a restricted funding source or general funds that we can allocate to fully implement the project, but there could be some grant fund opportunities. So you'll see a lot of these projects on the list, and some of the details included in your budget CIP books. I'm going to turn it over to Vivian Hausen, who is our sewer engineer, and she will take you through the CIP projects that are funded for this year that have to do with our sewer system. So, Vivian?
Thank you, Dante. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the council. So, I could speak forever on sewers, so Alex asked me to make this short. So I'm going to highlight the top three or four in cost items on this list. Overall, these projects are planned to take care of your existing system, just to make sure that your system, as you have it in place right now, is going to operate and continue to operate the way it's supposed to. So, currently, the city is completing a sewer master plan by an outside consultant, and also a pump station assessment by another outside consultant. And those efforts are going to conclude this fiscal year, and from those efforts, we expect to see recommendations, some near-term, some long-term. So there are placeholders in the CIP, especially for the sewer lift station assessment recommendations, because we expect that there will be some recommendations related to compliance with regional board requirements that the city may wish to implement sooner than later. And that is the second, the item that is shown there, a second from the top. Another item, the one, item number four, sewer main improvements and rehabilitation, this is an ongoing program. The recommendation by the regional board is to continue to maintain the sewer collection system, which is all the pipes under the ground, on a hundred-year or shorter timeframe. So that's a 1% to 1 and 1/2 to 2% replacement cycle, depending on the condition of the system. And this budget allows for that, every year, to go in, to prioritize the worst areas of the system, and to go ahead and repair them before they fail and create sewer system overflows. The next item, which is item five on the list, is the force main video inspection. The force mains are the portions of the system that are under pressure. So when you have pump stations, the pump stations, they take the flow and they pump it over to the treatment plant, and the pipes that are conveying this flow are under pressure, so you can't access them, they're always full. And as part of the pump station assessment, we're looking at ways to safely isolate and inspect those lines to make sure that they are also in as good shape as we believe that the sewer system is. There is a substantial cost for that inspection, but it's a one-time cost, and from that, we will know, the city will know, the risk or lack of risk associated with force mains. And force mains are extremely important portions of the system, because they are under pressure, so they're kind of like water, if there's a leak, you know it. Whereas with gravity, the leaks are very slow, under pressure, the leaks could be fairly large. And so with the completion of that assessment, the force main inspection, the city will have looked at all of its sewer system, and will know the condition of the entire system, and be able to make informed choices from here forward in terms of capital projects. And the other items on the list are smaller, and they relate to various ongoing improvements that are needed for the system. I can answer any questions you have on the smaller items, but I tried to hit on the top four.
Madam Mayor, just a couple of things. Dante mentioned placeholder on a couple of items in the CIP, just so that we're a little bit clear on that. These are items that we will bring back to the council before proceeding, so we've put some dollars in there. They were the two items, the City Hall Annex, so we'd like to have more direction from council in terms of where you'd like to go with that. And the reason for that is a safety issue. We've got, we're just not in a safe environment right now, given the people that we have and the circumstance we have, so it can be something as minimal as the modular building, or it can be something different than that. But we would bring that back to this council before we did anything with that. And the second item is the property assessment for Beechwood and Glencrey. Again, we have that as part of the strategic planning that we did with you in January, February, I've forgotten now. You asked to put that as a priority, and we said we'd bring that to you in the fall, so we would bring that back to you before we move forward in terms of what that looks like or what that means. And at this time, that concludes our comments. It went a little longer than I anticipated, but I hope the information was helpful, and happy to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Thank you for that presentation, and thank you to staff for being very clear in going through that. I also want to staff, thank council for, I know everyone has spent a great amount of time over the last few weeks, learning more about this and going through it. So, I know people have had one-on-one meetings and through email, so I think all the questions were really good, helped to educate everyone, so I appreciate everyone's time. This is always, this time of year, the time people do their most homework for this. We do have a couple of cards, we've got a couple of people with general questions, and we have a couple of asks, I'll call it. So, but council, because it is 6 o'clock, what would you like to do? Would you like to get out some burning questions yourself right now? Okay, all right. Okay, and you want to hear all of them? Okay. And then we can discuss them to see who we're funding and who we're not funding. First off, David Oblovy, followed by Joel Soffer.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a few line items that I need to run through, and then I'm going to go through this as quickly as I can. These are taken off of the draft budget that is in circulation now. On page 29, the $17 million fund, Fund 49, is listed under cash assets. So if you look under cash assets, and you look under the net value of the city in cash, we've gone up by $23 million over the last year. That's basically, essentially, a clerical error. Further, if you go to page 116, where the spreadsheet for that fund, for Fund 49, is shown, it is shown as being transferred in from the general fund. So it's shown as being sourced from the general fund, which clearly is not the case. The second thing is also on page 29, and a couple other pages, the $3 million or $4 million contribution from the general fund to Fund 16, the sinking fund for the library, does not show up in the cash balance at the top of page 29. So to explain this in context, revenues from all sources, 2014 to 2015, are shown on page 35, and total $14.6 million. Revenues for, I'm sorry, expenditures for the same period on page 45 are shown to be $17.2 million. That's a delta of at least $2.6 million of cash that had to go from the cash account down to that $3 million line item in the Fund 16. It's not there, so that, I'll get back to that in a moment. The third thing that is really a big issue, and I think this is just a point of confusion, is on Measure A. There are actually two Measure As in play here. One was from 2004, it is a transportation-only measure, it is funds that are, it is a proprietary fund. When our city created the fund, it was Fund 12. We've taken in roughly $200,000 to $250,000 a year since 2009. The paperwork trail shows that we moved, or it shows that this past year, we've moved $500,000 from that Measure A into Fund 48, which is the public facilities fund. I've been told that this transfer was to facilitate payment for the library, $1.1 million or so to the library. That's not legal. I don't think you're doing it, I don't think it's happening because anyone's trying to do something wrong. I think there's just confusion about what Measure A, which Measure A fund we're speaking of. There is no proprietary Measure A fund on the books, and I'm assuming that it goes into the general fund. So if you're going to take $500,000 for Measure A and put it into public facilities, then that also would be a debit on the general fund that should appear in the cash balance. The second thing is, related to that, is the public facilities fund, as of this moment, according to the books, has approximately $1 million in it. $217,000, I believe, came from Measure J. I'm going to beg your patience on this one, I'll go quickly. $217,000 came from Measure J, and $500,000 came from Fund 12, the already-mentioned Measure A. None of the funds are out, all of the funds are allocated, none of them are allocated for the library. And where this is really critical is none of them are allocated for street and road projects either. So you need to unwind that somehow, you need to figure out what's going where there, because you can't use that money from Measure A for the GIS mapping, the general plan, and other stuff that goes into that. The last thing is the issues with the funding of the library, and the $3 million or $4 million contribution that the city is ostensibly giving the library. The first issue is the library funding mechanism is mentioned throughout the general plan at different values, 2.4 million, 3 million, 3.5 million, 2.4 million. So we need to see a consistent number there. I mean, if you look through the budget on different pages, it's all over the place. I asked Councilwoman Reddick to reach out to the city manager and get an explanation of where the money is coming from, and the explanation was Measure J, .75 million, and please correct me if I'm misstating this, and 2.25 million from the general fund. So we're talking about an overall hit to the general fund of $3 million, plus another $500,000, if you factor in the Measure A kerfluffle. So we're talking about a general fund balance of sub $5 million, within $1 million of the reserve balance, required reserve balance the city is required to maintain. The library is important, we need to fund the library, but we cannot write a check for $3.5 million from the general fund to the library capital fund right now, without putting the city in tremendously difficult waters. We need more than $1 million in the bank account at any given point in time. That's it, thank you very much for your patience, Juan.
Thank you. And we'll address a lot of these questions as we go through this this evening. Mr. Soffer, followed by Georgia.
Good afternoon, members of the council. Mine are going to be just philosophical questions, and a lot simpler than what you just heard. I think we can all wrap our heads around what I'm going to talk about, and that is maintenance, maintenance of things that we've spent money on. And the city hasn't got a great track record on that, and I hope that you listen to staff's requests for maintenance. I'm going to be specific, and that is on the Poplar Street park and bridge and parking lot, which I know a little something about, because I live on Poplar. And that is, I go down there every day, you're not collecting any money from Poplar Street parking, because the thing is rusted out. Why is it rusted out? Because we get salt air from the beach, and so the city doesn't get its parking money. It's all closed up, everybody looks at it, wants to pay, and they can't pay, so they just go down to the beach, if they're strong and they can move. One of these days, we're going to have a lawsuit, and I just want to let everybody know that I warned you, this is my second warning on this, and that is, that the horses have eroded that descent at Poplar Street pretty dramatically over the years, and when it's dry, it's a little bit better than when it's wet. But I think that money can be raised from the people that own those horses and use that descent constantly for their paying customers, paying customers to descend to the beach on horses. They need to be somehow assessed, and that assessment then should be used for building some sort of a descent from the bluff top at Poplar down to the beach for older people, because you're going to have a lot of older people who are now going to be living at the end of Poplar, in all of those nice units that we've had built by the county. They're going to want to get down to the beach, and also visitors. And I think that it's simple enough to somehow work out something with the horse people, and finance it that way. Anyway, those are the two items that I wanted to mention. Also, we're going to be talking tonight about the library at great length, and I'll save most of what I wanted to say there. But one thing I do want to point out, and that is, right now, if you want to go to the library at 9:00, 10:00, or 11:00, or 12:00 on a Thursday morning, you can't. And the reason you can't is because there's no money for staffing for that Thursday morning. And the reason there's no money for staffing on Thursday morning at the current library, which everybody agrees is overused, and we want to see it improved, the reason there's no money is because the county worked out a deal with the city a number of years ago, where they would pay for part of the expenses that the city should be paying for. And in return, they would not have to staff for those hours, because that's the staffing money that the city got for operating expenses. We can talk about that tonight, I don't have to discuss that with you right now. I just want you to be thinking in terms of providing enough funds for the ongoing expenses of the things that you approve. And parking, I'm going to leave you with this thought, because this I'll talk to you about tonight, parking. Parking, you're building a great big new gym, okay? You're also building a great big new library, both admirable efforts on the part of the city. But you're not providing any new parking for either one of these. And one of them, you do have leverage on, you have leverage with the school board, you have leverage there. You can get the school board to start picking up all of the road trips for all of the parents that are driving back and forth, because they didn't want to provide buses. And you'd be helping the county, and the city, and all the people who can't get to work, because they're in these long lines in the morning commute and the evening commute. Thank you. See you tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Soffer. Next, we'll have Georgia. And so we've got a Boys and Girls Club, and then Joan, we've got you Boys and Girls Club and Park and Rec, so I'll send with you between Georgia and Charzad, you can cover both topics.
Great. Good evening, Mayor Fraser, City Council members and staff. My name is Georgia Antonopoulos, and I am the Chief Executive Officer of the Boys and Girls Club of the Coast Side. It's a pleasure to be back before you all today. Just two weeks ago, we described the Boys and Girls Club's journey as the new managers of recreation for the city of Half Moon Bay, what we consider a pioneering and innovative arrangement. We're only one of roughly two dozen communities in which Boys and Girls Clubs and local municipalities have partnered for parks and recreation services. So we were proud to demonstrate in our presentation that you saw, that we were exceeding expectations of the contract along a number of important dimensions. One, we have over-doubled class registrations in a year, offering more diverse classes than before, and even bringing them all back to the coast side, as some of them were over the hill. Two, we've improved our class success rate from 25% to 80% in that same year. And three, we keep the office hours at 42 hours a week on average compared to the 15 hours per week required by our contract. And the community center here itself is open over 70 hours per week. So this is all to say, at BGC, we were less interested in doing the bare minimum in order to satisfy terms of a contract, and more interested in creating a compelling center of activity for the entire coast side community. We think we've achieved that, and while being good stewards of the funds we've received, which we are very grateful for. With the $19,000 from the city for marketing, we consistently improved the activity guide, and increasingly featured activities from other community partners like the YMCA, HEAL, and senior coast siders. The city provided us $10,000 to cover insurance for adult sport leagues on city-owned property. This was displayed prominently in our new summer activity guide. The city also provided BGC with $10,000, $20,000 for equipment, and we were able to add AVI equipment here to the TAD-COCK Community Center, and we'll be renovating our train depot so it can be better suited for fitness classes and conferences, an improvement for the entire community. And you'll see, you know that the teen center is up and running. And you'll see, you know that the teen center is up and running, and it's in an area that we're investing staff and resources. So you can see, as a result, the Ted Adcock Center is truly a lively, busy, intergenerational, multi-use community center that is a win-win for us all and the community. Well, why am I here today if I've already told you all that? Because in terms of finances, even with this support, our Parks and Recreation function ran at a net deficit of $54,000 in our first year, and we anticipate a net loss of $49,000 in our second year. And we're being very, very conservative in terms of staffing, and we're being very watchful of our funds. So this is an investment that's important to us, and it's important to the community. So let me get to my request here. We, what we're requesting tonight is an investment of $50,000 to $80,000 of additional investment in the Recreation Division of the city of Half Moon Bay, which we so proudly manage. With your continued support, not only will we be helping ensure a healthy and happy Coast Side, but we'll become a model for other public nonprofit partnerships across the country. And I'm, you know, happy to tell you that you've inherited a fantastic management team that really drops anything at a moment's notice, and if, you know, to come tend to needs at the Ted Adcock Center. And I think it's a good investment of your funds, and we really hope in your consideration tonight that you take seriously our request. Thank you so much.
Thank you. John Kobelsohn, followed by Charzad Pantera.
Good evening. I'm up here wearing two hats tonight. First, as the senior citizen member of the Park and Rec Committee, I'd like to just report to you that I've been around long enough on that committee to remember when the city was running the program, and even then, it was on a tight budget, but they were offering quite a few recreational opportunities for the Coast Side within the city and all the way up and down the coast. Unfortunately, we can no longer fund that. We went on to San Carlos, I was on the committee during that. San Carlos, even with all their experience in park and recreation, struggled and was experiencing losses as well. Now, the Boys and Girls Club has ratcheted up, stepped up to the plate, and I think done a phenomenal job, but they are experiencing negative cash flow issue here, and I know that, because I'm going to put on my other hat, and that's as a Boys and Girls Club Board Member. Also on the Finance Committee, I can confirm what Georgia just shared with you, and I would just like to encourage you to be generous on our request on the upcoming year. We have some entrepreneurs, we have some ideas, we've already made some progress, and we would like to continue that with your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Charzad Pantera, followed by Sharice McHugh.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and city council members. My name is Charzad Pantera, and I am the Chair of your Half Moon Bay Parks and Recreation Committee of this beautiful city. So I'm here to first thank you so much for your participation at last Sunday's Concert in the Park at the Johnson, at the historical Johnson House. We had a wonderful attendance, it was a great example of community with a capital unity, and we hope to have more of those events. So I'm here making a request of our continued budget of $25,000 for next year's Concert in the Park. We will be redoing McDeutcher Park, McDeutcher Plaza, we're hoping to incorporate that and be able to have the flexibility we need to incorporate our community's needs for the upcoming year. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Sharice, followed by Paulette.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. Thank you very much for...
Did you turn it off? I'm sure you heard me, I've never been accused of not being heard. First of all, I'd like to thank you for the last two years, I think we've worked as a very good partnership on economic development, and as Dante mentioned, with short staffing with the city, the chamber was able to pick up some projects, like signage and things like that, and help you get through that. And I think we, as you have all your packets, and you have our little infographic that tells you all the projects that we have partnered on with the measurables on the back, there was just one other, two other things that I wanted to mention, and that was in the, I don't think in the budget that staff gave you, but in the packet that you received, the BiCoastal Program, we'd like you to consider $7,000 for that, because we want to continue making sure that people are shopping on the coast, and making locals aware that they need to spend their dollar here instead of over the hill. I think we've made strides with that, and we have several different things in that program that are outlined in your packet that we'd like to continue. And the only other thing is Tools for Business. Tools for Business is, it's on our website, and it is on your website, because we've shared it with you, we have purchased it, it's $1,620 a year, and we would love to have you split that with us, because we don't really have the budget for that. Tools for Business, any business, new or existing, can go on there and download anything they need, any, anything to do with getting their federal ID, they can go through their federal ID number, they can download documents that they can use for HR, or anything that they need. It's a very, very cool tool, so that any business can get help in any facet of what they do for day-to-day. So, and it's on your website, we're happy to share that, because we think it should be on your website in case a business goes to yours instead of ours. So those were the only two things. Thank you very much for your consideration. Thank you. So Sharice, the $1,600, that was not half of that, you're asking for about $7,800?
Yeah, well, no, actually...
I made a $10 error, I put $820 instead of $810, math was never my forte. So, half of $1,620 is $810. Okay, thank you. And the seventh, got it, thanks. Paulette, please. And that's our last card, and then we'll get to council questions.
All right, thank you for allowing me to speak here. I'm here, you know, two and a half years now. I have come before you on behalf of the majority of the Kehoe neighbors, asking for movement, progress, and funding, and to take responsibility for that water course ditch, whatever you want to call it, that is eroding property and also poses a tremendous risk. I mean, the only lucky thing, if we can call it luck, is that we've been in a drought for the last two years, because it poses such a big risk. $200,000, I see on the budget, for the next five years to deal with Kehoe. You know, I know, that is not anywhere near the kind of money that is needed to really rehabilitate that situation. And as far as I'm concerned, I'm very happy that the city is in a much healthier financial state than it was when I first moved to Half Moon Bay four years ago. But to me, that means, okay, great, now let's deal with all the things that you have been holding back from dealing with, because the money wasn't there. If the money is here, the infrastructure, folks, the infrastructure. This isn't about shiny new buildings, this is about infrastructure. We cannot build houses on sand. We need to make sure that we have everything, whether it's ditches, roads, I don't care what it is, that baseline of a strong town, making it sustainable, making it something that we can be proud of, but make sure that the underpinnings, the unglamorous things, are dealt with first and foremost. And of course, Kehoe, for me, is number one. So I am looking for a very different budget when it comes to the Kehoe project, because we all know $200,000 for the next five years is not going to do anything. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll bring it back to council. So are there any things with the speakers that staff wants to clarify, or does council want to jump in on some things right now? I'm looking at council right now.
Are there any quick responses on that?
I think they're discussing some things, so in the interest of time, you want to throw out something and see if we can answer it within ourselves, and we've got everybody's attention. Um, so council, questions? Councilmember Penrose?
Not just yet.
Okay, good. Councilmember Vice Mayor, call checks.
Thank you. Thank you for all the members of the community who spoke up and shared your input. Mr. Blovie, and your questions, I think, I'll ask, you know, between now and adoption of the budget, if there are errors or items to clarify, I'd like to have those clarified, makes sense to look into. The, a couple of questions I have, so all of the additions, right, all the additions were modest, were appropriate, we seem to be in a good position to be able to fund those things, and I'm inclined to support them, although I do have a question for Georgia, if I may. So you, you're asking, so the running Parks and Rec is at a deficit of $50,000?
Yes.
And could you clarify some of, what some of the incremental, what's the source of that?
Sure.
And so if we were to allocate more funding to support Parks and Rec, what would that go toward?
Sure, that's a great question. So Parks and Rec, and it's, we are very, budgeting very conservatively, and we're keeping costs down. It costs about $200,000 a year for us to run it. I think the city, when you guys ran it, it was probably around $270,000, $280,000 a year. So we brought costs down significantly from that. We are able to bring in, with your support, about $150,000 in revenue, you know, some of that, some of the revenues that we're trying to increase are rentals, but that takes time, and it takes staff support as well. So part of what you're seeing in terms of what gets funded is, did anyone come to the blood drive last night, here, that was hosted here? No, no one donated blood, anyone in the room? Okay, yeah, if you came, you would have seen this...
I donate blood twice a month at city council meetings.
All right. Well, what you would have seen, you would have walked in, and you would have seen just a really thriving community center. We had kids from the teen center donating blood, we had people all over the community. But that takes staff to coordinate, we need to have staff to keep the building open, we need to have staff to greet people, and I mean, so these are, there are people costs associated with it. So what we're able to do with increased funding is, number one, start to recover some of our costs, and I apologize for the language there, but that's kind of, you know, we are putting money that we could be putting towards other programs, we're investing in this right now, because we believe in the community partnerships. The other thing that we're doing is we're opening our door to nonprofits, and we're really trying to increase those collaborations, and we're not charging them what you would charge anyone else, you know, down the street. We're looking at the YMCA, and we're giving them reasonable, very, very reasonable rates for what we're doing. And we're only able to do those kinds of things with your support. What happens is, when we have good relationships with those partners, we have more services to provide youth, adults, and the community. So we're able to extend that kind of facilitative relationship with increased support. But, you know, bottom line, we're running a deficit, and we're really just trying to close that gap.
So, thank you, and basically you're talking staff, so that you can continue to provide the programs you're providing, and by spending money on staff, you are having overruns.
Absolutely, staff is a big part of that, yeah.
Okay.
Thanks, George.
So...
Madam Mayor, may I add just a couple of pieces of information, I hope will be helpful, as FYI. The request, because I don't think it was, I think, I don't think Charzad said the dollar amount, but she asked for the $25,000, and I think it's currently at 15, so that would be an increase of 10. So again, just for information.
Thank you for that clarification, so 25 in total, we've got 15 locked away already. Great, that was my question, thank you. And you want to continue?
I do want to continue. So I'm inclined for, providing we have the resources within the budget and available to redirect, without robbing Peter to pay Paul to fund the items that were requested tonight, that would be $50,000 for Parks and Rec, not the 80. I think the challenge would be to make it work, and then make it profit...
Boys and Girls Club.
I'm sorry, Boys and Girls Club. Thank you. With the challenge to make it profit, make that work. And that's my recommendation there. And then I'd also suggest I would support the incremental $10,000 for Concerts in the Park, and then the request of $7,810 for, I love the $810, for the Chamber of Commerce. I think those, all those items were logical, they're all modest, and they all improve the quality of life in Half Moon Bay. So those are my suggestions there. And I have some questions from the presentation, if I can circle back to that. So I'd like to go back to slide four of the presentation.
If I may interrupt, I would suggest that we number the pages next time.
Some of them are numbered, just now, all of them are numbered.
And while everybody's looking for that, could somebody get ready to tee up Kehoe Ditch and find out what we can do to put more money in if necessary?
So my question on slide four is, item there is, and it says estimated year-end balance $1.1 million, this is Measure J. So Measure J was the half-cent sales tax for three years that the community supported to do a lot of things, including bail us out of our financial difficulties, and keep our city running and operating well. It also ended up being quite lucrative for us, and is a good thing overall. But the estimated end-of-year balance of $1.1 million, is that unassigned and available, or is it assigned, and have we designated it for a purpose in other budget items?
So $1.1 million will be unassigned, Measure J, that's the remaining balance after the appropriation that we're proposing for the current year's budget.
Thank you. If I then compare that to the Budget Workbook, page 29 in the binder, for, wait, I need to make sure I got the right page. No, I don't. I'm sorry, page 34, under the General Fund tab. I do see that, okay, I do see that. So that $1.1 is unassigned, and it is part of the current $3.1 million that is unassigned.
That is correct.
So my next question then is about our reserves. What percentage of our reserves are funded? Are they funded at 100% of the legal requirement, or less than 100% of the requirement?
Just to clarify your question, are you asking about unassigned contingency reserve? Are they funded at 30%? Well, the contingency reserve is, per council's policy, 30% of operating expenditures, that's about 2.9 million. In addition to this...
Is it 100% of that, or have they been...
Yes, we budget 100% of that.
Okay, so you're the whole, so, that's right, so council set policy, reserve policy at 30%, and that is fully funded?
That is fully funded.
Great.
And in addition to this, you have another 3.1 million in unassigned fund balance.
I got it. So all of our reserves are fully funded, and additionally, we have 3.1 million unassigned. Got it, thank you. That's helpful. So I know there were some questions about the money and sources for the library funds, and wanted that clarified, I think that it would be important to get clarification on that, but I'm going to make the recommendation that we move $2 million of the unassigned resources from the unassigned fund balance to Fund 16, the Restricted Library Fund, leaving $1.1 million unassigned and available for other projects and initiatives. Those are all my comments right now.
Councilmember Reddick?
Yeah, to be perfectly honest, if Mr. Blovie's assertions are correct, that the 8 million in cash does not reflect the drawdown of 3 million general fund for the library, and that we only have 5.2 million left, I'm reluctant to spend anything additional out of general fund cash. I don't feel comfortable having only $5 million of cash in the bank. So I wouldn't want to, you know, fund anything else out of that, I don't think $5 million I don't think $5 million cash on hand is sufficient to deal with potential emergencies. So I think we need to have staff verify that right away.
So just so that I understand, $5 million, I just want to understand, are you not comfortable with $5 million in cash? Or are you perhaps referring to the committed contingency amount, which is by policy of 30%, which would be $3 million?
I'm saying $5 million's not enough.
So again, I'm just trying to understand, are you articulating then or advocating for that contingency fund to go to a $5 million versus a 30% contingency?
I think we ought to find some other way to, to pay for that $3 million for the library. I don't think having, you know, even $2 million, $2 million certainly is not enough. $5 million cash on hand is not enough as far as I'm concerned. That, that looks really risky to me. So I think it would behoove us to find other sources of funding to cover that $3 million. But I did have a question. I thought I heard the Finance Director say that the $3 million transaction was already recorded.
That is correct. So if I may refer you to page 34 of your budget book, it's showing general fund summary. You can see on the general fund transfers out, capital CIP, you can see the number right in the middle of the page, 5.1 million. This number does include $3 million transfer that we put in, on the books, the general fund transfer. So the $5 million figure is not correct.
Well, I'm not concerned about overall revenues. I'm concerned about cash on hand.
That's correct. And that's what.
And, you know, page 29, excuse me, shows a projected cash balance of 8261709. There's nothing that shows me that the $3 million, that's, that's already the net after the $3 million transfer, right?
So I am on page 29, you're looking at the Fund 16 Library capital? Because if you look at Fund 16 Library capital, you see this $3 million sitting right there. So this is our transfer.
Then what, I want to know then, why didn't the projected cash balance of 6302015 show, you know, the drawdown of the $3 million? It shows it the same. Because it's showing, you know, for '15, '16, 8 million, 8.2 million. If you look at the, the cash at the end of '13, '14, it's approximately the same amount. So it appears to me that there was no drawdown of the $3 million. So what I need to know is, is the existing, you know, general fund cash balance, 5.2 million and not 8.2 million?
Again, I, I think the better schedule to look at would be on page 34. That actually gives you all the information you need for the general fund assigned and unassigned fund balance. And you can see in projected actual 2014, '15 budget, on the transfers, the $3 million is being recorded there and is affecting the total unassigned budget that is recorded on the same schedule. So the figure that we are showing of 8.2 as projected beginning fund balance for the fiscal year '16, is that what we project for the budget? And the transfer from general fund already factored in this number?
I, I think we're confusing things. I'm talking about the cash balance, okay? Now, your page 29 shows a cash balance of 8.2.
Deborah, could you please point out where on the page it is?
Yes, you go up to the top, general fund.
It's the first row.
Page 29. 8.261.
So I just want to make sure we're on the same page. Page 29 is the fund balance summary for all funds. Is this the schedule you're looking at?
Yes, and I'm looking at the general fund projected cash balance for June 30th, 2015. That appears to not reflect the drawdown of the $3 million.
What number are you looking at? $8 million?
I'm looking at the 8.2 million projected cash balance, 6302015.
It is the first row for cell. $8,261,709. I'm going to come over and make sure we're looking at the same page. And I think if it's something we need to look, go back and look at, then we need to go back and look at it.
I just have an extra question.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. The goal is to find out, you know, what is the cash balance, you know, currently? What are we, what are we going to be starting out with? And if we're starting out with, you know, $5 million showing the net of the $3 million transfer, I see that as a problem.
Let me look at this and then I'll get back to you.
Yeah, I think we need answers to all of Mr. Blovie's questions. I went and looked at all the pages. I see what he's talking about. I just note the interpretation is correct. But I think, you know, we need to investigate that. You know, and maybe we push back the vote on the budget till the second meeting in June, but we get that information and understand exactly cash on, cash on hand to me is one of the most important measurements of how we're doing. And if we only have $5 million cash on hand after that transaction, that's a problem for me.
So we, right now, we have a reserve policy of 30%, so are you looking at changing our reserve policy and increasing that?
You know, just because it says that we need to keep 30% on hand and that we have a couple million dollars more, to me, that doesn't necessarily, you know, address, address my risk concerns. I think, you know, $5 million isn't sufficient. We could have an earthquake or some other natural disaster or something where we need to dig into the, the general fund. And to have cash on hand of only $5 million just seems risky to me. Even though having $3 million on hand would, you know, meet the, the reserve test. I just don't feel comfortable.
So you're interested in raising the reserve policy?
I'm not saying that. I'm saying that.
But that would be the mechanism.
Well, the mechanism is to be careful about cash on hand. And yes, we have, you know, reserve requirements, but, you know, sometimes you want to have a little more than your reserve requirements. And, you know, our City Finance Director mentioned that she expects, you know, activity to remain flat for the foreseeable future. We're not expecting any big windfalls. We're not expecting the economy to dramatically increase. Looks like status quo budgets out for the next few years. So I think it would behoove us to manage our general fund appropriately and have sufficient reserves for emergencies. I don't consider, you know, building a magnificent new library as an emergency. I see street and road repairs. I see addressing, you know, catastrophes. I see those as emergencies. So personally, I'm not comfortable with having less than, you know, I'm not comfortable with even $5 million cash on hand, so.
So again, you, you want to change our reserve policy and increase that?
I'm not saying change the reserve policy.
That's what it is. If you want to put cash away for, for reserves, for emergencies. And we didn't, in fact, I was just telling Councilmember Penrose today about even when we were in our dark days seven years ago, we never touched any of the reserves. I mean, that is in the event of tsunami and then all bets are off. And, you know, if, if there's earthquakes that are devastating. And we have a power to get loans. There's other things, you know, in doomsday scenarios. But what we're experiencing here now is in the last seven years, we went from a budget of $8 million bare bones to now we're looking at a budget of over $14 million. And this money's being put back into our community. Last year, we started this with a windfall of 1.6 million. Now we have even more. I mean, you look at the list of things that went directly back into the community and we're still doing very well. There's always can be a doomsday scenario tomorrow. We can all get hit by lightning. A meteor can come down from the sky. Then all bets are off. You, you shift and you change plans. But let's put our money back into our community. Let's put this back to people, to parks, to all these great things that one needs in a community.
So use a capital fund to pay for it. Don't touch the general fund. Use some other capital fund. You're going to have to make trade-offs with other capital projects, but that's something we can have a discussion about. It's a capital project. So the general fund ought to be reserved for those sorts of expenditures where we need immediate cash rather than paying for a capital facility. And, you know, if you just, you know, as a, as a metric, you know, staff is proposing a contract of $745,000 for a library project manager. If in fact, we have about $5 million on hand of cash, that contract is the equivalent to 20% of our cash on hand. That, that worries me.
So I have a comment. So I, I'm not in favor of hyper-funding our, our reserves. I'm in favor of fully funding our reserves at 100%, which is our safety net should we have an issue. Would I support leaving a little extra in there? And it never hurts. But, but I do not support building a war chest of cash on hand for something that is in excess of what we need to have, of what we're required to have, of what we should have should there be a difficult situation. And to do that at the expense of stopping our library project and stopping the good works in our community. I'm in favor of moving $2 million of our unassigned reserves into the Fund 16 for the library while at the same time still fully funding 100% of our required reserves. And I'm, I think that's great for our community. I think our community deserves the quality of life that our budget can support. And we can support some great things. We had a great event on Sunday. We've got, we're doing great things with Boys and Girls Club. And our library is, it's tired, it's too small, it's done, and we need to fund it. And I think it's, in budgeting, it is reasonable to move budget items around to make it balanced and make it work. And I think the things I've suggested are a better move for our community than stockpiling cash and not pursuing the library project. So that's where I stand.
Stockpiling cash? $5 million is not stockpiling cash. And what I want to know is, so they've already recorded a $3 million transfer. Are you suggesting we actually transfer even more out of the general fund for the library, above and beyond the $3 million?
Yeah, I want to have clarification of the questions that were asked earlier to confirm that, and you don't even have to do that tonight. I know you're going to figure that out. But I'm just, I'm advocating, I'm advocating and recommending an incremental $2 million more.
We're happy to.
For $5 million.
We're happy to answer the question about the $8 million. If I may ask you.
Madam Mayor, may I just have one?
No, we've got some questions getting addressed and clarified here. This is our discussion now. Thank you.
If I may ask you to go back to the slide in the presentation that shows general fund or your fund balances, let's go back to actual fiscal year '13, '14 for a second. So you can see projected ending fund balance, which is actually, actual ending fund balance at this point because this number has been audited by, by Mason Associates. So the ending fund balance is 10.8 million. You can see the same 10.8 million as the projected actual beginning fund balance for the current fiscal year. And the next line is showing negative 2.5 million as a net change to general fund. This is our transfer, well, as a netted out. So the reason this number is negative because it is accounting for the general fund transfer that we are recording in this current fiscal year. And the number right below it, 8.2 million, that's the general fund cash balance. So the number we are looking at is 8.2 million, not 5 million in the change. I hope this answers the question.
You have a question on that. So does that, does that mean that we have 8.2 million in cash and if we, with $3 million unassigned of that, so if we move that $3 million elsewhere, we are then down to $5 million in, in total cash?
If you move $2 million out of 3.1 million unassigned balance, then you have to subtract the same number after, out of projected ending fund balance of 8.6 million.
I got it. So my point is, even if we moved all of it, we would still have $5 million.
You would still have more than $5 million.
Still have more than $5 million. So I, I stand in my position that we, we allocate $2 million of the 3 million, 3.1 million that's unassigned to the Restricted Library Fund, Fund 16.
Yeah, this is a policy question, I guess. Is, there would be no objection were we to come up with projects we thought the community wanted to reducing our balance down to the 30% reserve? Is that what the council's saying? That, that that money's there to be spent and that because we have projects that we think the community needs, that the community approves of, that the council backs, that we should then spend all of our money on these projects, leaving us the 30% reserve?
We have right now, a lot of things have been obviously funded in here. We've got a couple of little requests. I've got some other little requests, but small amounts, some things we had talked about today. You, you had some ideas as well. But that still leaves, still a lot of money. I mean, we made this money. We haven't been able to do a lot of infrastructure, a lot of great things that the community wanted. We started last year when we had over 1.6 million. Now we got the $3 million there. And I'm not saying spend every last of that $3 million, but gosh darn it, let's put some money back into the community. Let's put them back in the trails, back in the parks, back in there while we still can maintain our reserves which have been assigned at 30%. That's good business. Put our money back into the community so we can, we can do things with it that the community wants.
Got some comments?
Yes.
Yeah. First off, thank everyone for participating this evening. This is a very complex situation when you're in municipal government. You look at the binder and you look at the different funds and the different allocations. It's not like you're running a simple budget of business and not business. Government is very complex. And to have a lot of numbers thrown out at you in a study session, it's hard to follow. And I think the professional staff has to go back and evaluate the commenters and see exactly where we are. So we, as a council, can make the right decisions to move forward. And I really believe that we're on the right track. And more importantly, I don't think anyone in government wants us to be a bank. That's not our mission in life is to be a bank. We have to have a reserve. I understand that. We have a policy in place. But I don't think government should be our bank. We should be investing back into the community that the people are paying to keep this city operating. Simple as that. We're not going to waste it all. We're going to try to pick and choose the right balance for all the community that we've all heard tonight and looked through in this complex binder of budget. And I think when you're looking at the unexpected foreseeable disaster, trust me, every city that gets hit sadly with a disaster in America, they're not paying for that project out of their bank account, let me tell you. My hunch is it's coming from all of Americans to help support that disaster in the community. And hopefully, they would do that. Unfortunately, if we would have a disaster. So I think we're on the right track. I think people have requested some funding for it. I believe the speaker that requested on the drainage issue, we're investing, we're beginning it. It just doesn't happen. You're not going to get a check for $8 million to fix a project. It's a little bit, little bit, little bit. So it's a beginning. But I'd like to, I will wrap up here, but I think we're, we're on the right track. I think everyone worked very hard. It was very well explained and I think we're doing our very best. But I'm not in favor of, of us being a bank.
Madam Mayor, we're happy to walk through the Keyhole Ditch project.
the Quixote ditch project.
Yes, thank you.
One quick comment. I can't support the additional staff, the additional management analysts, et cetera, that was presented. I don't feel comfortable with that. We have a status quo budget. We're going to have a minimal general fund. So I can't support the addition of any staff at this time. I want to make that clear.
Okay.
Relate to that and understood, Councilmember Reddick. And I'll just note that our budget is, our budget is flat, which is pretty admirable in this time. So I just want to note that.
Dante, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to bring a little bit more clarity to the Quixote drainage issue and project. As I explained earlier, you're really looking at two separate features in the same document. One feature is the capital budget. And that's what you're going to spend, or what we're proposing be allocated for this current year, or I'm sorry, the next fiscal year. Then through the next five years, we're recommending, that is actually your capital program. There are a number of things that we need to do with Quixote ditch. So if you go to your summary of projects, you'll notice that Quixote is actually in two places. The $200,000 is for this year. There are a number of things we need to do, studies, working with regulatory agencies, permitting, design, that we want to undertake actually within this next year. The construction is under the section that is unfunded. And you'll see that there's a $5 million, 5.7 million. We know that some of the options that we're exploring, you know, their range anywhere from $3 million to $7 million. We won't know exactly what the project is or how much. So it didn't make sense for us to really earmark money that we're in control of. The thought is, once we kind of pencil in or pin down the cost, there's grant funding, there's potential to collaborate. There are a lot of different opportunities of how to plan to finance it. So it's not $200,000 for five years. It's $200,000 for the next year. And then we anticipate anywhere from $5 to $7, $3 to $7 million for the next five years. But we don't know how we're going to pay for that. And we'd like to explore different options that we'll bring to you at a later time.
Thank you, Dante. John, you wanted a quick comment? Then I have a quick comment on this.
Yeah, I know time is of an essence. But I think when you're talking personnel issues, we're not only, I'd like to share with the council, we're not only representing the city of Half Moon Bay. We are representing the whole coast side at times. And with its traffic and highways and libraries. So I think staffing is very important to do a professional job to ensure it gets done right. We're looking now here at the complexity of our budget and putting these numbers together in a system that will work. But it takes people to run that system. So it shows the community we are doing the right things. And finally, you know, we have had audits. So there's no hidden money. There's no theft. It's just a complexity of how do we get these out here so we all better understand them? That's my feeling. But I think it's important. You need personnel to get that project done.
Thank you. I agree. I mean, as our income has risen, we're doing more projects. And we obviously need a few more people to help that done, to be done. We have gone from using contract employees, because that was prudent at the time. Now we have enough work for full-time employees. And there's been planning and staff budgeting for that. So I respect the decision, the ask for it. I know that the city staff has been very lean and been very prudent with how they've managed their tasks and have done a lot themselves. I mean, I share with the public. You know, just recently, City Hall finally has coffee in there. You kind of think it's funny. You have your work. You kind of have coffee, tea, maybe like that. They didn't do that. That's how much they were pinching pennies. Staff is happy. They've got some coffee. Just takes a little bit. I want to make the community happy because we've got this money now. The chamber has done a great job with economic development. Our hotels are filled. When our hotels are filled, that means that there's more people getting jobs there. There are more people going to restaurants. So more people from over the hill are contributing to help us get the things we need for a community. I think that's really important. I don't want to have a huge, huge surplus of money. I want to make sure we've got our pension funds fully funded. I say 70% of the state of California does not have that funded. We are doing really well. Let's put money back into the community. I would support putting a total of a half a million dollars into the Quixote budget, just in case. Dante had explained, you're going to do a study. But in case there's some more money that needs to be done to keep that moving ahead, I'm okay with doing that so we don't have to wait. Let's put a half a million in that. I'm, as much as I'd kind of like to put $2 million into the library, I would be, I would say, let's just put another million into it. And that still keeps a bunch of money on the table. And if Councilmember Reddick, you want to have a discussion on increasing our reserves, let's bring it back to another time and increase the reserves. Let's have a discussion on that. But right now, that's funded. Let's put money in our community. Increase the trails, increase the parks, increase the things that people want to have a great community. This is for us. Let's do this. We've got some money. Let's pave roads, fix streets. Let's do it.
Okay, then I have an ask. And I want to budget some to work with Caltrans to synchronize traffic signals. That would be the one thing that we could do, you know, short of widening roads or other road projects that would ease the traffic flow. And that's something that could be done relatively quickly without much environmental work. Yes, we have to deal with, you know, the state. But it seems to me, based on the complaints I get, I hear all the time, why aren't the lights synchronized? So that's my wish. And I can go along with the additional money for Quixote. I do agree with Dante, though, that we're not going to come up with $5 million to do the Quixote drainage. That's going to have to happen through grants. It's just, you know, we're going to have other stormwater and drainage needs that are going to have to be addressed in the community. So I don't see it happening out of the general fund or the capital budget in the totals we're talking about. I think that's going to have to be grant-funded. I do think that the Seymour Bridge is important. I heard today that maybe the Seymour Bridge is not covered in the Tiger grant application. That worries me. So I want to make sure that the Seymour Bridge is addressed this year. I also think that we do not have enough money in the budget for a new website. I think the $50,000 or whatever it is, $65,000, isn't enough to get us a fully accessible, interactive website. And I mean, people being able to interact with the city site to report potholes, sidewalk damage, whatever it is. And that would tie in with the GPS system. So a fully functional, interactive system, I think we're talking on the order of $100, potentially $150,000. And maybe the way to approach it is to budget an amount for an IT consultant who can help us develop the scope of work and do a little value engineering and come up with some alternatives. But I'm thinking, you know, a small incremental fix for the kind of money we have in the budget isn't addressing the sort of needs we have for open, transparent government. And that includes open budget. Most cities in California are going to open budget. And that involves website improvements and interactivity. And, you know, I don't think we should go another year or two without that. One of the reasons this seems so complex is we don't have the financial reporting system that we need. And we also don't have a transparent, open system where the public can get online and ask questions and get them answered on an interactive basis. So I think we need, if we're really for open government and transparency, we need to move that forward in larger budget amounts. So those are a couple of things.
That's the spirit. Spend some money to improve our community. I'm glad you agree with me on the Quixote ditch to add more money. I think we want to do some website work. I think we want to put everything we have out there. So thank you for those comments. I would support that, too. Vice Mayor Kowalczek, and followed by Councilmember Penrose.
I got something to say. I agree.
Okay, good. This is a start.
Totally agree. Especially, I think the challenges for staff, we're giving you some wish list things. And there's some juggling and moving and things need to happen. I think traffic mitigation and timing of lights would benefit our whole community and our whole coast side. And if we can fund that and support that, I think that makes sense. You previously brought up another idea that I also support, which is a right turn lane, northbound Highway 1 at Kelly. I would also support investigating that. Now, we don't have, I don't know what the estimates are for these things. Right? So like a website. There's, I think we need to scope it. I think the scope is bigger than we initially thought. I want it to include social media elements and be more interactive. And so I think we need to scope it, get those estimates, and figure out what that's going to cost. Is it 50K? Is it 100K? Is it 20K? Depends how you do it. It could be any of those or all of those added up, depending on the scope. But I think those ideas make sense. I think it improves the quality of life for our community, and that's what I support. And I disagree with the mayor. I think we have, I know, what's up with that? We have previously designated $3 million to be placed into the restricted library fund, Fund 16. And I am advocating for an additional $2 million to be assigned into library fund, restricted Fund 16 for the library out of our unassigned funds, still leaving an overage of over $1 million on top of our fully funded reserves. And that's my opinion. Thank you.
Councilmember Penrose?
Yes. On our website, I don't know exactly what scoping it means, but my feeling is we could hire someone who develops websites. And there are websites for city council, not lots of them, several of them in the state of California that have been done really, really well with interactive maps and interactive. The idea is not to give staff more work. The idea is to take away work from staff so that staff is not sitting there accepting checks and writing out permits for people. Staff is not out there working two, three hours to find a document. If everything is online in a way that it's easy to access, then it takes away from staff work. It doesn't add to it. If we hire someone, then we're not asking staff to figure out how to do it. We're asking someone we're going to pay money to to do it. The other point I'd like to make about the website is that in addition to the money that we're proposing to spend on Spanish translation for some of our newsletters, that we really look at having an easily accessed Spanish translation on that. And there are several ways to do it. Sometimes you push a button and say, "Give me this website in Spanish." There are several ways to do it. At any rate, that is critical to me because then we're servicing our entire community, not just the 70% of us that can access it now. In addition to that, there is money set aside for sidewalk survey that currently is addressing businesses and downtown. I'd like to expand that sidewalk survey into an assessment of the entire city sidewalks so that when we make a decision about how we're going to pay for repair, much-needed repair of our sidewalks and our heritage trees, we'll have some information about what needs to be done, where does it need to be done, and what the cost might be.
Good. That was well said. That's what we discussed today. I support that. That was great. So we can have a whole assessment. Who needs, who wants sidewalks or whatever that is. City manager, you had some things to say.
Thank you very much. I'm going to try to capture. Thankfully, many of you mentioned some of these items to me before. So I had the chance to talk to our community development director. So he'll provide a couple of comments on some potential numbers. And I wanted to just mention on the website, they do cost $100 to $150,000, depending on what you want. And we were trying to be more modest in our jump in terms of that. And it would take, as you've already articulated, some outside help to help us do that. It will, though, also take staff time because staff is the one who has that information. But ultimately, once the website is up and running, it can do all the things that you articulated. And so Dante, if you can help us out. So what I've got on my list is the synchronization we talked about, the right turn at Kelly, the sidewalk issue. We had talked about potentially moving additional, the $100,000 that was discussed at the last meeting into perhaps that CIP item, and then Seymour.
Thank you. Just really quickly, the Tiger grant application, we submitted the pre-application. It does include the Seymour Bridge. So hopefully, we'll get funded for that. Traffic signal synchronization. The way that that works is there's a conduit that goes from traffic signal to traffic signal. There's a traffic control card that when a car approaches an intersection, it actually times, takes a standard time that that car would take to reach the other intersection. That works well when you have a lot of traffic signals because Highway 1 doesn't really have a lot of traffic signals. It's going to be very difficult, not impossible, but it's going to be very difficult to time it because there are so many streets in between. It's going to be very difficult to determine when that car gets to the next traffic signal. We're working with trying to manage expectations. What I would recommend is we do or take some of the steps that we would need to do. We would have to obviously get it approved by Caltrans. And Caltrans will require a feasibility study, someone to actually do the analysis for that. And that's $30,000. And then the construction, you know, for the conduit, you know, that's more expensive. That's when you get into the hundreds of thousands of dollars, essentially. Also with Kelly, we did look at that intersection. It was brought to our attention through the Traffic Safety Committee. We believe that it was a quick fix also. But in consulting with Caltrans, it changes a lot for them. It changes the queuing times of traffic turning off. It changes the dimensions of the intersection. It also requires, if it's our idea, of course, they want us to pay for the feasibility analysis. So what I would recommend is that we fund the analysis and then in a future year, fund the actual improvement.
Yeah, and it makes sense to me because the Connect the Coast side and some of the traffic improvements we're considering all add more traffic signals.
Correct.
And what concerned me was I didn't see, you know, signal synchronization as an item that might be included in a new program for improving traffic flow on the coast. So if we can get that, you know, as part of the program, that would make me happy.
Okay, great.
Thanks. Thanks.
Dante, do you have, I'm sorry, that's louder than I thought. Do you have a dollar amount or estimate of what the right turn at Kelly would cost in terms of the feasibility study?
We took a look, and I think we should be able to get that done for about 40,000, and a similar amount for the feasibility of traffic synchronization.
So on that, so that's about an extra 30 and then 40 to help with that turn? So that's an extra 70 right there.
I think it's 40 and 40, or 30 and 40?
It's 40.
40 and 40.
40 and 40, okay. All right, just making that tally. Was there anything else there? I think I, we had $1,000 into the Village. This is the program that Judy Macias has been working about. I know you guys get newsletters about that, too. They've established that, and we've talked about it before, established it in San Carlos and Redwood City. And the Village group is really helping for a little seed money. I had allocated $1,000 in the budget. I would like to bump it up to 2,500. It would be really good to help kick them off. I don't know where it was jumped in. Magda, could you tell me where that 1,000 was in? Was that in a general fund?
Will you trust me on that one?
For $1,000, yeah. If we could bump that up to 2,500, I think that's, because that's a wonderful group they have. Would you?
Yeah, I would definitely be in favor of 2,500, yeah.
That's good. That would help kick them off.
A quick question, what's the total asked by the chamber? For this fiscal year, the entire amount?
60. 25, 25, and 10, is that right, Alex? And then the additional 7,810 dollars. 70, less than 70,000.
Alex? Come on, Alex.
$67,810.
And that's quite a bit less than last year, as I recall.
It was $100,000 last year.
Thank you for that.
And just, I wanted to address the City Hall annex. So that's going to come forward as a separate item, I'm guessing, because I think there's going to be parking issues that need to be addressed with that project if we're going to be, yeah, so.
That would be a whole discussion on something like that.
I think we'd better move to our next meeting before we spend everybody's money here.
We can, we'll take a break in a minute. And thank you all for being here. If you just bear with us a little bit, this is getting better. So just for clarification, I was suggesting adding 1 million to the library fund. Vice Mayor Kowalczek was so bold to ask for 2 million. What would be our balance left of our 3 million of additional monies? Does that still leave over $1 million in the pot? If we put an extra 2 million for the library?
Well, that is correct. So you have 3.1 million in unassigned general fund balance, so you subtract 1 million out of this amount, and this is your balance, in addition to fully funded 30% contingency reserve.
And all the extra little goodies, a half a million for Quixote Ditch?
We have enough.
Do we have enough? I'd just like to leave 1 million sitting on the table still, that for whatever reason we need to go on it.
May I try to summarize, if I think I have it?
Because you are coming back in June with this.
And we can come back with individuals, but let me just see if I've captured what I think I've heard. So I'm hearing 50,000, and someone can help me with the math and write these down, 50,000 for Boys and Girls Club. I heard an additional $7,810. We should round that, because it's going to mess up our math.
For the chamber?
For the chamber, pardon me, I didn't say that. I heard an additional 300, and we went back and forth a little bit on that, for Quixote Ditch.
In addition to the 200 that was already allocated?
There's 200 already there, so I'm just doing additions to?
Yes.
Additional 300. I heard an additional 100,000 that was discussed at the last meeting but not included in this budget, because the budget was already produced for sidewalks, so that would be added to the item that's in the CIP, so that it would cover the entire city, an assessment of the entire city, not just the downtown area. So that's an additional 100,000. I heard 40,000 for the feasibility study for the synchronization of the lights on Highway 1. I have an additional 40,000 for a feasibility study for the right-hand turn from Highway 1 to Kelly, going south. I heard the coast siders.
Going north.
Going north, going north. Sorry, north, sorry. I heard the Rec Committee, an additional 10,000 for the Rec Committee for the concerts.
Right.
Thank you for that, Siobhan. And the coast siders amount I was writing, and I think I heard that, is 1,500 additional?
Correct.
And then the one that I'm not clear on is the additional library amount, I've heard between 1 to 2 million dollars.
Correct. And you've got, for the website?
I did not get the website.
Okay.
So we could increase that to?
100,000?
To 100,000.
Well, we already have 65, so bring it.
To 150 total.
150 total?
Yeah. I think that's, what do you think, Magda? Do you think that's a reasonable thing to pay someone?
Based on what I've heard Councilmember Reddick describe in terms of the interactivity and the consultants that we'll need, it's a fair amount.
And someone to design.
We have looked at the different tiers, and we stayed away from those very expensive ones.
Go for it.
So we need to scope it. We need to come back with a scope and fund it, because scope and dollars are tied together. And 150,000, it's actually not very much at all for a website from corporate standards. It may be enough for us, so let's get our scope and let's fund it as Councilmember Penrose suggested, but let's get a scope.
So that equals an additional 95,000. If, I think there's 65 in there now, so to get to 150 is additional 95. Clearly, we'd scope it, we'd put that in now, in terms of allocating some dollars for the time being.
One last question. So it's SAM, we forwarded a budget addendum to cover a sequo for the recycled water project. And I don't know if that has made it into the budget or what the process is for.
So for the Sewer Authority, SAM, it comes out of our Enterprise Fund, it's a sewer fund, it's completely separate out of the general fund, and that'll be coming to you guys June 2, I believe the same night as this, for approval. So I'll have a whole complete staff report, and just received it today from SAM, the addendum. So we'll be bringing that for approval to you guys. And your guys' comment or direction. Thank you.
Thank you. So staff, you have all you need?
No, library.
Yes, I think we are on the same page.
They just need the personnel to get through all the ones we're throwing at them.
Correct. Yes. So we're done here, and we can have a break between this?
I'd love a motion.
Someone please make a motion.
And we're at library at 2 million?
Yes.
What's the total?
Would you like me to read it again?
What's the total?
Can we get a quick total, Julia? Can we take, you want a five-minute break, and we can come back to that, or give me two minutes, so we can do the math?
I'd like us to finish this, have a five-minute break, and get into other meetings.
So I can skip the total, and I would make a motion, move to add the items just previously listed and discussed to the city's budget.
Have a second, please?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Penrose?
Aye.
Councilmember Mower?
Aye.
Councilmember Reddick?
I'm going to abstain until I get the questions answered, thanks.
Vice Mayor Kowalczek?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Craven?
Yes, that's four ayes and one abstention. Thank you, good work, council, good work, staff. That was a lot of money to spend. Thanks, folks, we're going to come back in five minutes, I promise.